Welcome. We'll get our meeting started. Thank you for joining us. And we are excited this evening to celebrate a number of special individuals for their academic as well as athletic accomplishments. And I know we have one other. Well, I was going to defer to our superintendent. But yay, swim team. So. Congratulations on 30 consecutive years. Oh, yes. And Pam did pick this up from the parade. And perhaps many of you have one as well. But it's the 30-year dynasty of girls swimming. Congratulations, girl power. There we go. Mike, will you please take role?
All board members are present.
Wonderful. Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I'd stated before, we have a number of very, very special presentations and recognitions this evening. Dr. Wall and Mr. Inskeep are both going to share in that honor of celebrating.
Okay. Jim Inskeep's coming to the podium. We have three very special recognitions for Carmel High School, recognized by Gatorade in the three areas of Girls Cross Country Player of the Year, Boys Cross Country Player of the Year, and Boys Soccer Player of the Year. I'm going to let Mr. Inskeep give us a little insight into these wonderful student athletes. Jim?
Thank you, Dr. Wall. And if I could have Sarah and Ben and Andreas come forward at this time. I'm going to say a little bit about each of these individuals as we celebrate their successes and recognition individually and collectively here. Carmel High School is honored to be the home of three Gatorade State Players of the Year in three different sports, the only high school in Indiana to have multiple winners. And it was, this is just from the fall sports season, so we're extremely excited for each of them. To start, junior Sarah Leinheiser was the Indiana High School Athletic Association Individual State Champion this fall at the state cross-country meet. She had the third fastest high school 5K at the state meet course all time. She also ran in two national meets following the season, including the Nike Cross National, where she placed seventh individually, and the Foot Locker National, where she placed eighth individually as well. She is currently the school record holder for Girls Cross Country at Carmel and only the third individual champion ever from Carmel High School. Sarah Leinheiser. Yeah. Our next individual from Boys Cross Country, senior Ben Veitch. Senior, Ben has been here before to be honored several times. He is a two-time individual state champion for Carmel High School and is the only individual from Carmel to win the Boys Cross Country state title, a tremendous honor as well and a dominating performance this year. This year, he participated in two national meets following the season. He ran in the Nike Cross Country National and finished as the national runner-up in that event, and also at the Foot Locker National event, where he finished third individually. He is also the 3,200-meter state champion and hopes to defend his crown here in June with track. He has committed to IU next year. Ben Veitch. And senior Andreas Roslander had a tremendous senior season in soccer this year. He was named All-Conference, All-County, All-County Player of the Year, First Team All-State, Indiana Soccer Coaches Association State Player of the Year, the National Soccer Coaches Associations of America State Player of the Year, and also NSCAA All-Region Team and an NSCAA All-American as well. He led the Greyhounds to a Final Four appearance this year, their furthest since 2006. We're very proud of Andreas. Thanks. And we'll be back next month with swimming.
Okay. In this era of being a global and a digital citizen, we have three very special students with us this evening and their families. Thanks for coming along, and principals as well. But the Net Literacy Internet Safety Video Contest winners, respectively from Cherry Tree, Mohawk Trails, and Prairie Trace. I've had, and you'll get the chance, I've had the chance to see their public service announcements. It's 30 seconds of candid wisdom for anyone that will listen from our students. And so often at administrative meetings, we talk about, you know, students catching up or students moving along with the teacher. In this nature of digital citizenship and technology, many times, we're catching up to the students. And that's okay. And I think that's really a healthy learning environment that we have. So tonight, it'll be really exciting to see these students as leaders with a message that I hope people take to heart, because it's really three great public service announcements. I'd like Ms. Courtney Taylor and Mr. Don Kent to come to the mic. And please tell us about these students, the PSAs, and then we'll bring the students up as well.
Hello. My name is Don Kent. I volunteer at Net Literacy. Net Literacy is a nonprofit that started in a school that at the time was called Carmel Junior High, back in 2003. And since then, we've had hundreds of Carbo Clay School students that have done wonderful things, from refurbishing computers. And I'm proud to say that two Saturdays ago, we donated another 110 computers refurbished by Carmel High School to libraries all over the state. And now, we have a total of 750 computers we've donated to Indiana Public Libraries and in almost 100 libraries. In total, we've donated 34,000 computers. So that's a lot of computers that have gone to almost every independent living and senior facility here in Carmel, as well as around the state. One of the programs that I'm most excited and most proud of is a program that we started with Bright House Networks back in 2008. And it was announced by the Superintendent of Public Instruction at the State House because it is teens and students that are using their voice, that are being role models, that are being student youth leaders, and spreading the word in their own voice about internet safety and how to have fun while being smart and safe online. And I'm especially proud this year that we had three winners. In the past, we've had two. And this year, we had a great participation, three winners. And I'm especially excited to, for you to see their public service announcements.
All right. Thanks, Don. My name is Courtney Taylor, and I work at Bright House. So first of all, thank you guys for being here tonight and allowing us to showcase the wonderful achievements of all of you guys and the three students that we're going to recognize tonight. Bright House believes we do have a responsibility to promote digital inclusion and internet safety programs. And these winning PSAs really allowed for the students to be the big stars, influencing their peers with positive messaging. So actually, the PSAs will start running on February 29th. So starting that day, you're no longer allowed to fast-forward through any commercials, all right? And so they'll be on during the commercial breaks of your favorite shows, you know, Food Network, ESPN, you know, your regular news channels, as well as your local on-demand. So you will have, to the three students that are here tonight, you will have so many friends telling you they saw you on TV, which is going to be really cool. So, and then just to kind of cap it off, you know, Bright House really believes in enhancing the educational experience, especially with technology. We successfully launched Connect to Compete last year in Carmel School District, which allows for low-cost discounted internet services for qualified families. We also provide classroom innovator grants, which is up to $500 for the use of technology in the classroom. And then also, we're usually here every year at senior awards nights. We give out laptop scholarships for students that excel in leadership and community service. But without further ado, let's go ahead and bring the three students up, right? And they'll get to see the premiere of their PSAs. So, Don, if you want to name-
Dr. Wall, did you do it?
Oh, yeah.
You guys bring them up. I'll give them certificates.
Oh, okay.
And then there'll be a Kodak moment for the parents after. We'll pause here.
Yep.
Kodak moment, too.
So, okay. So Ella, Aiden, and Sada, could you please come on up? Go to Dr. Wall. And Ella is from Cherry Tree. Aiden is from Prairie Trace. And Sada is from Mohawk Trails. And unbelievably, they were great, they're fourth and fifth grade students, and they beat everybody. So these guys are awesome.
Okay. So, let's see. I know who this one is. Okay. Here we go.
My name is Sada, and I'm a Net Literacy volunteer. Twitter is one of the world's most popular social networks, where people share 140 kids to blogs called tweets. It's not to never publicly share personal information and decide if your geo-tagging functionality should be turned off. Twitter allows users to block and ignore unwanted tweets, report abuse, encrypt, and make your tweets private. For more information, visit SafeConnects.org.
My name is Aiden, and I'm a Net Literacy volunteer. Snapchat is a mobile app that lets you share photos or videos with your friends, up to 10 seconds before it self-destructs. However, the self-destruction process can be circumvented. Others take a screenshot of what you've sent. Snapchat allows you to support people, avoid abuse, and set privacy levels so that only friends can send you snaps. For more information, visit SafeConnects.org.
Okay. Here is Ella.
My name is Ella, and I'm a Net Literacy volunteer. Here are some safety tips when you're shopping online. Check out the merchant's website to see if they list a physical address, a phone number, and carefully review the return policies. Use a credit card or other service that offers fraud protection. And when you're paying online, be certain that the web address in your browser starts with an HTTPS. For more information, visit SafeConnects.org.
Now, we're going to be able to stop safely, so thanks.
Okay. We're going to take a couple moment break to allow for a photo opportunity with Jennifer. Jennifer, where would you like our students?
Just right there.
Okay. Perfect. And then would you like Donna and Courtney over there as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Stand right here. The one that has the seal. There you go. Good job, guys. Let's have you all standing close together. And then angle this way just a little bit. Push this way. Other way. Angle this way a little bit. This way. Wait, Ella. Perfect. Actually, we'll have you all take two steps this way. One, two. Perfect. Great job, guys. And then smile. One, two, three. One, one, two, three. Now, Courtney, don't you guys want to get a picture? Sure. There you go. On the count of three, look at me. One, two, three. Two, one more. One, two, three. Perfect. And I think your parents might want to take some. You're good? Okay. Thank you, guys. Thanks, Jennifer. Thank you.
At this time, we will resume our meeting. Next on agenda, we have consent. We have a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next, we have action. On our first action item is the adoption of policy 3600, Non-Resident Employee Enrollment Benefits. And to that, Mrs. Mills?
Yes. We sent this policy to our, oops, sorry. We sent this policy to our attorney and needed some advice as to whether or not this policy met code. And so we had to change, just tweak a few things on it. So it says, "Consideration of this employee benefit," instead of "for full-time employees," because it does impact part-time employees as well. Does not impact substitutes. So we had to change that. And it will be subject to approval by the superintendent or his or her designee. And those are the, and then we added the new code that pertains to this particular benefit provided to our employees.
May I get a motion on the table to approve policy 3600?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have bid awards, the interior finishes for the remodeling of Town Meadow. And to that, we turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a bid award for Town Meadow Elementary School Interior Finishes and Remodeling. The corrected amount on this total award is $507,200. The alternate that's shown here was, is included in the, essentially the base bid under Bill Lawrence. So the corrected amount would be 507,200. This is a project that's being funded from general obligations bonds that we sold last year.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the bid award for Town Meadow?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the bid award for the finishes and renovations to Carmel High School. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This total bid is $1,009,31612. These projects were also funded, will be funded from bond proceeds that we sold last year.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the finishes and renovations to Carmel High School?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the bid award for the finishes and renovations to Carmel High School. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This total bid is $1,009,31612. These projects were also funded, will be funded from bond proceeds that we sold last year.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the finishes and renovations to Carmel High School?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Go ahead, Pam.
Yes. Where are all of these particular things going to be happening within the high school? Are they in the newer parts, the older parts? Because I know there's been some renovations along the way, so I'm just wondering where we needed this particular, all these items.
I'll look to Ron Farron to be more specific. But while he's coming up to the mic, I can tell you that we're doing work in the main cafeteria-
Oh.
-as a part of the project. And then, Ron, if you could share where the other flooring is being taken place.
It's rather work within the, excuse me, E-wing, B-floor. And then we're doing- Oops, sorry. Trap, did I hear that? Trazal's first floor in the E-wing. We're doing classroom finishes in the C-
B.
B. B-wing. We had previously done Trazal. We've been flip-flopping back forth to do Trazal in one area and classroom finishes, and then we reversed that. So we're in the area where we did Trazal a couple years ago and some last year. And then we're doing, and most of the rest of the work is in the cafeteria and serving area, the main cafeteria.
Okay. And the asphalt?
It's the East Drive, or, East Drive, North Drive going Trail of Tears, past the soccer stadium.
Are we adding a cover? No.
Heat and walk lights.
Do we have other questions? Thank you, Ron. I'll see that there are no other questions. May I get them? All in favor of supporting the bid award for the renovations and finishes to Carmel High School? Signify.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have our discussion, Engineering and Technology Material Adoption. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. This evening, I bring to you for discussion the Middle School Engineering and Technology Committee Recommendations. In this past fall, they met, and the committee was made up of teachers, community members, parents, as well as administrators. And their charge was to articulate and align the courses with state course descriptions, with technology and engineering, as well as career exploration standards. And we're very excited to recommend the several modules that we're looking at. They're related around STEM, so science, technology, engineering, and math standards. And there's lots of different modules that we're recommending for these new courses. And we really wanted to make sure that not only were they aligned with the standards, but also aligning them to the middle school program evaluation recommendations, to have that exploration in there. And then also to find topics that are interesting to get more girls to sign up for these courses for that exploration, because that was another big piece, to make sure that we are having girls to explore these different types of topics. This is going to be a two-year phase-in. For the first year, we're bringing in the modules from Paxton-Patterson that we're recommending. And then the next year, we are looking to bring in the Project Lead the Way for our eighth grade, which will really very nicely align with our Project Lead the Way that we have at the high school as well. So we're excited about this, bringing this recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Questions? Tricia?
So basically, are these going to be a variety of elective courses? Is that how it's going to be presented?
Yes. The courses are for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and they are nine-week elective courses that the students can sign up for. And they can sign up for the multiple nine weeks in one year. So sixth graders can take it once, they can take it twice, they can take it up to three times, or they could take it up to four times if they had enough room in their schedule. Because each nine weeks, they'll, they will do two of the modules, and then they'll also have some whole group units. But the whole group units will be different for every nine weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Then I will assume they won't repeat themselves?
Correct.
Okay. Pam?
Yes. I just had a question. I note that a lot of the technology that I've been reading lately is going to STEAM instead of STEM. So are we going to be moving in that direction?
Well, one of the pieces, there are so many ties with, the STEAM brings in the arts. And there are so many ties, as you look at the engineering and the technology, those pieces, it ties in with art. I mean, a lot of the same skills, as you're looking at bringing the art in, are the same skills that you're using in the engineering, the technology, the math, and the science. And so it naturally integrates itself in those pieces. Because as they design, for example, art, one of the modules is architectural design. And so that brings, naturally brings in the arts as they're designing their different constructions that they do in those pieces.
Well, since we are incorporating the arts, maybe we should start calling it STEAM instead of STEM.
Other questions? Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. And you are next on our agenda as well to further talk about our communication materials.
In this evening, we had a committee made up of teachers, as well as parents and administrators for, to review materials for our communication courses at the high school. And these courses include our journalism, our highlight, our TV, our radio, broadcasting, all of those courses. And so the committee has recommended a variety of materials to use with, within our communication classroom, so that we can continue to provide the great instruction that we have so far and continue to provide the services that we provide with our highlight, our pinnacle yearbook, as well as our TV and our radio broadcasting.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Open for questions? Yes, Tricia?
And this really goes for the STEM/STEAM classes, too. Are the prices of these materials within the realm of what we typically have for materials for coursework?
Right. Well, for the, for the STEM classes that we are recommending, the materials, many of it is electronic. And so many of the materials will come out of our CPF money. What will go in as far as, we won't have a textbook rental fee for these, but we will have a materials consumable fee, which will actually be, for this first year, will be actually less than what we're currently paying in our current tech ed classes. And I'll bring you all these changes in July, but that'll actually be, that fee will actually be less than what we're currently. And then the materials for the communications, yes, they're, we're making sure that they're within the realm of what we're charging as far as, because there will be a textbook rental for some of these materials when they have a textbook.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. I'm assuming then, at our next meeting, you'll hope that we will take action?
Correct.
Okay. That sounds fantastic.
Thank you.
And then we turn to Dr. Wall for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Lila. As Lila indicated, and we all applaud the swim team, not only for their outstanding efforts and dedication in the pool, but the legacy. It was really exciting to be a part and see 30 years represented at the high school, the Sunday after the meet, in a brunch setting where they could just share from the first team. And really, interestingly, they talked about, really, they've won 31 state championships. And how the team that won it the first time really set the mark, but then there were a few years in between before they won their second one, which essentially was the beginning of their streak. But the team that talked about the beginning of the streak said, "We were shooting to be as good as that team that started it four or five years before they did." So they've won 31, but 30 consecutive. I thought that was really interesting to see that somebody had to set that mark and that standard. And it was really the team that did it, their first state championship. That was really remarkable to listen to those stories. And we're going to try and get a representative group of those young ladies on our, on the radio show that I do at the high school. Excited for that. And then, I'm excited, I'm going to be emceeing the Math Bowl on Thursday at Prairie Trace. Just a fun thing, I do the Spell Bowl as well. But it's really neat to see all 11 schools.
within the realm of what we're charging as far as, because there will be a textbook rental for some of these materials when they have a textbook.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. I'm assuming, then, at our next meeting, you'll hope that we will take action?
Correct.
Okay. That sounds fantastic.
Thank you.
And then, we turn to Dr. Wall for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Lila. As Lila indicated, and we all applaud the swim team, not only for their outstanding efforts and dedication in the pool, but the legacy. It was really exciting to be a part and see 30 years represented at the high school, the Sunday after the meet, in a brunch setting where they could just share from the first team. And really, interestingly, they talked about, really, they've won 31 state championships. And how the team that won it the first time really set the mark, but then there were a few years in between before they won their second one, which essentially was the beginning of their streak. But the team that talked about the beginning of the streak said we were shooting to be as good as that team that started it four or five years before they did. So, they've won 31, but 30 consecutive. I thought that was really interesting to see that somebody had to set that mark and that standard. And it was really the team that did it, their first state championship. That was really remarkable, to listen to those stories. And we're going to try and get a representative group of those young ladies on the radio show that I do at the high school. Excited for that. And then, I'm excited, I'm going to be emceeing the Math Bowl on Thursday at Prairie Trace. Just a fun thing, I do the Spell Bowl as well. But it's really neat to see all 11 schools represented, the elementaries, and the kids working in a team atmosphere and working together with their peers. I just think that's neat. Is it competitive, yes, but it's team-building, too. So, I think it combines some really neat life skills that we want our kids to have as they move forward. So, just a little plug on those two items.
Thank you. Nick, any questions for Nick at this time? Great. Well, moving right along, Tricia, legislative report?
Thank you. We have approximately three weeks left to this short session. And as usual, many initially promising bills have significantly been altered or have died in the process. So, I'm going to update you on that, and also to legislative-related meetings that Nick and I have had. So, as you can see up on the screen that Jennifer has up there, our first legislative priority has to do with funding, being fair and adequate. If you look at 1B, we've been watching two bills related to the state allowing more accurate and transparent referendum ballot language. House Bill 1163, authored by Pierce, died. But Senate Bill 279, authored by Stoops, has been referred to the House Committee on Education, and Representative Kathy Richardson, just north of us, has been added as a cosponsor. So, we have our eye on that one. If you look at 1C, with regard to more referendum balloting options, Kathy Richardson's HB1287 has died. So, that is not there anymore. 1F, both House Bill 1303, authored by Cook, and Senate Bill 359, authored by Rates, both of those have died. But, the issue of the permanent ability to use capital projects fund to pay some of our utility expenses and insurance expenses will be sent to a summer study committee for recommendations in the next long session. So, the issue is still very much alive. Just because it connected with some finances, they want to handle it next year at the long session. Moving on to our second legislative priority, dealing with testing that more adequately meets student and teacher needs. House Bill 1114, authored by Kersey, that has died. This one supported an all-new form of I-Step, but really, it really provided very few details. However, we do have a bill, House Bill 1395, authored by Benning, that among several other things, will assemble a task force of educators, legislators, and community members to make a recommendation on the testing issue, with an eye on eliminating and replacing I-Step by 2017. So, this does a couple things. This effort aligns with the two-year testing contract that we right now have with Pearson that ends in 2017. And it also aligns with the Every Student Succeeds Act, the ESSA effective dates, which begin 2017. So, this really is an effort that is kind of getting all these ducks in a row. I also wanted to point out that this panel includes educators, legislators, and community members because, one, because ISBA is prioritizing getting a board representation on this panel, and two, because anybody up there, or anybody listening from out there, is eligible to be on this panel. So, if you're interested, please contact your, one of your legislators and see what you can, how you can help all the kids in Indiana benefit from this. And then, as a side note, a bill language dealing with the potential rescore of last year's I-Step Plus, that language has been removed, and this effort really dropped off the radar. It's no longer really on the radar, which we are kind of watching because it was an expensive option to take. So, that's gone. And then, our third legislative priority addresses two transportation-related issues. 3A, we began with four bills dealing with this issue, and two remain alive. And those are House Bill 1109, authored by Houston, and Senate Bill 329, authored by Mishler. And they deal with them very directly. So, it's very specific to that issue. And then, 3B, Senate Bill 93, authored by Cruz, deals with various education matters. It's kind of a hodgepodge of a lot of education issues. The safe drop-off language was included in the original version, but it was removed in order to keep the bigger bill alive. There's a lot of, the safe drop-off language was good, but there's a lot of other good things. And that was kind of, became a contentious matter in one little specific area. So, that's now pulled off. And I'll be addressing that when I move on right now, because that handles our legislative priorities. And since my last report, like I said, Nick and I have had two legislative meetings on January 27th, being met with Representative Tony Cook, who is the retired superintendent of Hamilton Heights Schools. So, with that past experience, we've heard from other legislators that Representative Cook is increasingly being looked to as an important authority on education issues. So, we are really excited to talk with him. In a nutshell, he is very interested in fair distribution of Indiana general fund dollars. But he was very honest in saying that he received significant pressure from other legislators as to why a wealthier district like us would benefit from any further adjustment of student funding. And of course, we pointed out, which he already knows, but we reiterated, that there was a very wide gap in student funding between typically urban, not-growing districts and suburban, growing districts. And last year, in the long session, that was addressed somewhat, we've had legislators tell us to keep pushing on that, that they don't think that's, at the area it should be, or, you know, the ratio it should be. But he was honest in saying that he does, there is a lack of understanding in that issue, and he gets a lot of people saying things to him. He also provided some insight into the unpacking of the ESSA. And Nick, of course, again reiterated that CCS would love to be at the table during any of the process of this unpacking. And then, third, we discussed Senate Bill 93 with him. That's the one that Cruz authored with the safe drop-off language. And actually, Representative Cook gave us the first indication that this language hit a snag. And that was very handy, because that allowed me to focus in on that issue and find out where that has been, of which I just reported to a moment or two ago. So, appreciate having that insight there. And then, on the very next day, Nick and I had the opportunity to meet with representatives of the Indiana Department of Ed, the IDOE Legislative and Policy Team. And two members were able to meet with us, Mr. Scott Reske and Mr. John Barnes. These men provided, pardon me? There you go. They provided really intriguing background on several topics, and not going to get into the nitty-gritty detail, but those included state funding, IDOE support of more local control, testing possibilities under ESSA. Very excited, new opportunities for the General Assembly and the IDOE to work together in developing a more beneficial testing system. They had several ideas along that line, so it was good to hear that energy. And potential future discussions centering on that safe drop-off language that was pulled from Senate Bill 93. So, they had some other insights on how to maybe approach that next session. So, I would put that out there for our board members when we look at legislative priorities next year, how we want to include that and how ISBA might be guiding that discussion. Both these men indicated that IDOE considers Carmel to be kind of the canary in the proverbial mind. So, if we were saying that Carmel was affected by a certain piece of legislation or a certain situation that had developed because of legislation, if Carmel was affected, then they felt, wow, we need to listen, because then other districts must be affected, if it's hitting a stable, constant, high-achieving district like Carmel. And then, with that, in line with that, they both expressed a keen interest in IDOE meeting annually with Carmel's superintendent and legislative liaison, and to keep that going if possible. So, that concludes my report, unless someone has something else to add.
That was great, Tricia. Thank you for that summary. I'm really encouraged and excited about the annual meeting with the IDOE. That is great progress.
We did point out that this was the first year they took us up on the several requests that we had in the past, and so, well, but now we know exactly who to contact.
There you go.
Do others have any comments or questions or additional materials to share? Kathy?
I'm not sure, but I think that John Barnes, that you met with, at one point taught in the Social Studies Department at Carmel High School.
He did. And then, he finished his career 28 years in, trying to think, one of the townships. But yeah, he started his career with us. You're right. You are correct. He brought that up.
Well, seeing that we do not have any announcements or any other reports, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us.